Welcome, everyone. Mr. Splendaro, do you have anything to report from closed session?
No, Mayor, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Call the meeting order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Here.
Next, we'll have the flag salute and silent player followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned at webcast@metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, October 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 21st at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda approvals and additions and/or deletions, how does it please the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to pull item M1 off of the agenda for this evening, and we'll bring that item back at some point in the future.
So pulled, thank you. With nothing else requested, Madam Clerk, would you read the public comment statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any public comment?
On non-agenda, Kenneth Lee?
I'd like to propose a win-win proposition to stimulate senior spending. Most seniors, they get around $1,150 to $1,700 from Social Security. After low income, it leaves about $500 spending cash for gasoline, utilities, insurance, et cetera. Lots of seniors plan for a comfortable retirement, but life dishes out roadblocks and unforeseen losses. I would like to see a pilot program to try to get businesses to offer or participate in a senior savings hour, two to four, offering a 10% discount on purchases. This would test and evaluate the Galt senior spending power and could or could not benefit both parties. I'd like to thank the food bank programs that help us out, and thank the thrift shops and the flea market, and thank the government programs. What is needed is to bring back at the flea market is the dollar-for-dollar match program, the EBT, they used to have. They would match every dollar, they would give us the dollar to buy produce. And it was another win-win for the produce vendors and the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two online, but I need to see if they're on non-agenda items or something else.
Thank you. Do you need a minute?
Yes.
Okay.
Mary, is this on non-agenda items or on an agenda item? Greg, is this on a non-agenda item or on a topic on the agenda?
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank the City Council and all of the city staff for giving up every other Tuesday night for the important business that comes before the City Council. I know it's something that doesn't get said often enough or loud enough to all of the members of the City Council and the city staff. So, on behalf of this one citizen, thank you very much for giving up your time. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. You're not getting a reply from the other individual?
Hold on, we got one more. James, is this on non-agenda items or a specific item?
Non-agenda.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. The reason for my call tonight is because I received a flyer in my driveway from GTVflyers.com, and it's kind of troubling. I checked it all out, and it seems to be true, but it says that every single aspect of the media is Jewish, and that six Jewish corporations own 96% of the media, and it lists...
No, let him go. Can you go ahead and unmute?
Yeah, I don't get that. I mean, I'm familiar with the Brown Act, and so whoever allowed for me to finish my speech, I appreciate that, because the Second Amendment protects the First Amendment, and it's a shame that people don't have the First Amendment in the country anymore, partly because of who controls the media. But then the other flyer is that every single aspect of the COVID agenda is Jewish, and it lists all the people. I mean, the CDC Director, the CDC Deputy Director, CDC Chief of Staff, CDC Chief Medical Officer, CDC Director of the Washington Office, the COVID czar, COVID Senior Advisor, HHS Security, or Secretary, and it goes on and on and on. They're all Jewish. I looked it up, and it's true. I got the flyer, came from GTVflyers.com, and with the stuff going on in Israel...
Excuse me, sir.
Because we're going to go to war.
Excuse me, sir.
We're already spending money in all this, yeah?
Your comments need to be pertaining to the city of Galt. This is not a national debate or national issues. These are issues, you must address issues relative to the city of Galt, please.
Can we investigate this? Because we have a local news station, you know, that if they're controlled by these people, and they're trying to send us to war where American...
We don't have a news station in Galt.
Well, what I'm saying is, we have, there's news, there's local news stations that are accessible in our area, correct?
Okay, I'm sorry. If you cannot stay focused on the city of Galt, we're going to have to let you go. I appreciate your comments.
They're going to get us all killed. They're already flooding us with all these immigrants.
Madam Clerk, would you cut him off, please?
The niggers are fucking...
Okay. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. Welcome back from recess. A quick reminder that any public comment is by law granted, but it must be focused solely on city business. So with that, would you please continue, Ms. Hubbard? Anybody that strays from outside of those lines will lose their opportunity due to their own behavior. So would you please continue, Ms. Hubbard?
Mary? Rudy?
Hi there, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I would like to discuss, actually, the influx of the unhoused people that I'm seeing in Galt. Like, I'm driving around, and I'm seeing a larger percentage of people living out on the streets, or, you know, huddled into alleyways, or trying to just keep dry in the rain in little overhangs. And it's just becoming a bit of a situation. When I walk down the street with my wife and my kids, I have to watch out for all of these niggers and Mexicans attacking us, and it's getting terrible. And I don't know what I'm supposed to do about it. Like, I don't want to use force, but I have all these homeless niggers and Mexicans that are invading us, and there's nothing I can do about it. Like, is there anything the City Council can do to, like, bust these guys out somewhere else? Like, maybe south of the border ideally, or send them up to Canada? There's nothing I can physically do without getting in trouble with the police. I don't want to go and commit a violent act, so I'm asking the City Council, are they able to take some sort of action here to go and remove all of these people? I pay my tax dollars. I want you guys to help keep my city safe. I want my wife and my kids to be able to walk around town without the risk of being robbed, stabbed, or raped by these filthy invaders, these niggers and these Mexicans. Can you guys do anything about that? Or am I just speaking in the dead air and wasting my tax dollars? Do I need to move counties? Because I'll move out east if I have to, if there's going to be somebody who can take care of the nigger problem. Can you guys answer that? Thank you.
I love free speech because it allows people to display for the world exactly who they are. Next caller, please.
We'll try Mary again, and then... Mary?
Is that no more online comment?
For now.
Closed public comment? Thank you. Reports by the City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees? Vice Mayor Sandu?
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papino?
I will report on the September 20th cable television meeting, and it was a lot of routine business. However, we did undertake the first salary and classification study that's been done in over 17 years. So that will kind of have a trickle-down effect on the new fiscal budget and the cable casting fee schedule, which will be coming out in December, and I'll report back on that then.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, the League of California Cities is having an advocacy, has an advocacy survey on their website, and so I would implore my colleagues to go on the website and take that, what they're asking for, what are the main issues facing our city from a state policy level, so they can build their... or we can build our advocacy platform for next year at the legislature. If you would like, you can send me an email, and I can fill it out for all of us, or, like I said, feel free to put it on, go onto their website and fill that out. I'm going to fill it out at the end of this week, so... And then, next, SECOG, we attended a land use and natural resources meeting, and the city of West Sacramento has presented several planning efforts that they're doing in their city to encourage residential infill development with existing urban areas and strategically planning for new growth areas. So, not only housing, but they are taking a look at doing things differently with transit and connecting regional transit into their city to offer up different housing options for their residents. It was a really good presentation. We have a board meeting this Thursday. As part of that meeting, it'll include a few areas of South Sacramento touring, recently revitalized areas, and this includes business districts, infill development areas, invited property transformation. So hopefully, I'll be able to come back and report out on a productive tour and productive meeting. I'm also, just so everyone knows, I was appointed to the nominating committee for our vice chair for next year, and so I'll be participating in that process, picking our new leadership for the SECOG board. Then lastly, I just want to make another announcement I did last meeting, but Youth Leadership Academy through SECOG is gearing up, and they're accepting applications. There are 40 openings for youth grades nine through 12 to participate in Six County Regional Leadership Academy. As soon as I get the toolkit, electronic toolkit, from SECOG, I will forward it on and make sure that we do what we can to try to recruit somebody from Galt to be on that. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have nothing to report. With that, we move on to information consent calendar. Is there any public comment on this item? If there is...
Well, there's hands raised.
Okay.
Jonathan? Jonathan?
Seeing that there is no public comment, we will move on. It is recommended that items 1, 2, 3 be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the council members. I would like to pull K3 for just a brief discussion. Would anybody like to pull anything else? No? With that, we'll be looking for a motion to receive file warrants for a period ending October 4th, 2023, and minutes of regular meeting for October 3rd, 2023. So moved by the mayor. Do I have a second? Seconded by the vice mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Thank you. On item K3, Mr. Boring, I want to say first that I think you're doing a fine job, and this may sound harsher than I want it to be, but it's not my intent. I am only concerned about what's good for the city, and you are good for the city, sir. So in here, there was a couple of mentions of, I don't see them quite off the top of my head, but there was a couple of mentions about discovering that prior payments to a certain fund was, I'll use the word oversight, which may be unfair, but my general question is, I saw a couple of items in the report stating something to that effect, and what measures are the city putting in place to mitigate this in the future?
Sure, there are a couple of items. Two of them are related to the Consumas Community Services District. So I believe it was fiscal year 2020, 2021. The city and the county worked together to change how some of the property taxes that belong to CCSD, previously, they flowed through to the city, and the city would remit those. And when our current staff were making the payments last fiscal year in 2122, we had turnover in staff, and the notes that were left for them were a little misleading. So we made the payment to CCSD in fiscal year 2122 based on the notes that we had received. And when we're reviewing our fund balances and doing all of our calculations for fiscal year 2223, we noticed they were higher. So we worked with the county, and so we made the correction. So we paid CCSD the amount we owed them for the prior fiscal year and made the correct payment for fiscal year 2223, and staff has updated those procedures, so they'll continue receiving the correct amount going forward. There was also a new CFD that we have, and in that one, the revenues that we received were higher than budgeted, and the payment to CCSD is based on a formula. So the expenditure that we have is based on our projected revenue, and our revenue was higher, so the payment we made to them was higher. So that was just, that's also a new CFD, so going forward, that should be more accurate. And the other increase was related to Cal Waste in our solid waste fund. And during the fiscal year, the city renegotiated the agreement with Cal Waste, and the city agreed to reduce our franchise fee. And as part of that, the city receives all of the revenue for the residential customers, and then remits the payment to Cal Waste less our fees. So we reduced our fees, but as a result, the payment to Cal Waste was higher, so it just exceeded a budget amount. So it's just a transfer of the amount we retain and the amount we pay to Cal Waste.
Last, it's not really a correction, just a notification.
It's just an update to our budget. So because that agreement was updated mid-year, in our mid-year update, we reflected the revenue, but it was an oversight to reflect the expenditures. So when we do the next year's budget, we'll have the correct formula going into the budget cycle.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification. With that, I'd be looking for a motion to accept the fiscal year 2023 preliminary fourth quarter report and budget adjustment. Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Papino. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. With that, we move on to regular calendar items. City managers...
Kill niggers, behead niggers, roundhouse kick a nigger into the concrete, slam dunk a nigger baby into the trash can, crucify filthy blacks, defecate a nigger's food, launch niggers into the sun, stir fry nigger...
Okay, so...
Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a comment on that, though, too. I do know we have an important agenda item on cannabis that have people that have been waiting to comment on that, and they're not able to be here, so how should we handle that topic?
Let's continue the item to another meeting. If council can stand not hearing the update, that's fine. And this gives those folks who wanted to comment by phone another two weeks to make plans to be here in person at the next meeting.
Well, I agree. I think the person that's, I'm referring to Mr. Davidson, who spoke earlier, who's actually unable to leave his bedside for several months. He's hospitalized, so he can't.
Okay.
He's been waiting to speak on this item, so I'm just trying to figure out a method for him to do that. Okay.
And he has submitted a written statement that's in the back of the item for the cannabis update.
Yeah, I know. Just, I know speaking live is more important than just having, yeah. So, but I understand. I just wanted to make that point on behalf of Mr. Davidson.
Okay. Public, go ahead. Do you have something else to say?
No idea. Sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
I fully support moving the item in light of the recent developments tonight, but I just want to apologize to those who I personally reached out to, to be here. Both Pete...
Could we let people in here speak and not maybe...
I just...
I don't think so.
Is this not a non-agenda discussion now?
Okay. Thank you.
So, no M4. So next, subject of formation, the City Council Ad hoc Committee pertaining to quality of life issues within the city. Does anyone have a comment, suggestion, nomination?
I'm interested on that committee.
I am, too. Anyone else have a comment? Enough for you, sir.
One at a time.
I would second that. With that, I guess...
We have public comment.
Okay, we'll take public comment in the chamber. Is there any public comment in the chamber on the ad hoc committee? Go ahead. Correct. You can do it from right there, Phyllis. You're fine. We can all hear you.
Probably, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Regarding this quality of life, I need to know if you're talking all ages, because mainly, quality of life applies to seniors. We have a Commission on Aging for the city of Galt that does their best, of which I'm a commissioner. So my question is, how are you referring to this? All ages or quality of life for seniors? Thank you.
Thank you. I would see, personally, I see that as for all citizens in the city of Galt.
If you make that specific, then, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Kenley?
I wanted to know, will this encompass my concerns at age 70? I wanted to know if it includes senior resources for food and housing, rip-offs and scams that's being done in the city on credit cards being skimmed, and people driving around trying to sell jewelry, rent control maximums for everybody, you know, the limit to increases, health and safety concerns for senior living facilities. I wanted to know the quality of life for handicap parking enforcement in buildings. Basically, when they came before the Planning Commission, they had designated handicap parking spaces that was part of the specific conditions. I find that buildings now are eliminating those handicap parking spaces and using it for personal parking. And basically, pedestrian safety issues for all ages. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No more public comment on this item.
And just for clarification for the public, due to online disruptions, we are eliminating that feature for the rest of the meeting. So with that, I guess we are looking for a motion to approve Councilman Sandu, and who else wanted to do it, and Mr. Farmer?
I'd make that motion.
I'll second that. May I have a roll call vote, please? That's okay.
I have a comment about that as well.
Then go ahead and comment.
I would just ask my colleagues that are on the ad hoc to be, and I know you will be, open to reaching out to those in the community that have expertise in the area in which you're going to investigate. I know that's a little vague, but...
Yeah, and I actually have a question, too, now that you mention that. Yeah. I have a question. It says the ad hoc will meet with the police chief. So is this something that the ad hoc will just solely be the police? So, oh, the only reason, yeah, I didn't think so, because I know that you're not always in charge of quality of life issues as a whole, so it'd be, who would be present in the ad hoc?
Councilman Farmer, the ad hoc committee will meet with the chief, myself, and other community advocates for this particular issue.
Okay.
And we'll be reaching out to the both of you to set that meeting up.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
And I apologize. It was moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by...
The mayor. With that, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Good luck, gentlemen. Next is a resolution for the City Council enabling strategic plan as a vital tool to implement a plan of action to achieve results for fiscal year 2023, '24, and '24, '25. Mr. Hines, you're on board.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the strategic plans utilized by the organizations worldwide as a tool for decision-making and resource allocation. I want to make it clear it is a living document that should clearly communicate where the organization's priorities lie, as well as outline the strategy for meeting those priorities. So changing internal and external conditions, additional knowledge, and available resources may create a need to update or change the strategic plan's content. Periodic review is therefore essential, and so we will be coming back to council with a periodic update on our progress, just like we've done in the past. And as I mentioned, it's a vital tool. We have a consultant, Juan Lopez, who met with the executive team back in March and came up with suggestions that we would recommend to the council for a particular strategic direction. On August 16th, the executive team and the City Council met over at the PD, and the City Council deliberated and came up with the list of strategic priorities that you see therein. that you see therein. And so what I am seeking tonight is formal, um, formal, uh, adoption of these, of this strategic plan, uh, as our tool for moving through fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five.
Is there any question by the council?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Just, um, I mean, the staff report's pretty straightforward. I just, I don't ever remember doing this with our strategic planning before. I thought, you know, strategic planning was, we brainstorm, come up with what the goals and we kind of give direction. But I don't remember us doing like a formal resolution designating those as the plan. Is that something we normally do? Because I don't recall ever doing that before. I, I don't have a problem with that. I just, I mean, I felt that it's kind of, that's why we meet and do strategic planning is because we're talking about the goals of the city. Now we're, we're, this resolution, the way it's worded, it says we're, want to make this like an official guiding document, but, but I felt like it was already that. I don't know. Just.
This just formalizes the process. This is, this is our roadmap for the next two years. Uh, so given the gravity and given the, um, the importance of these items and these actions, uh, we thought it should be memorialized in a resolution. Um, but I do reiterate to the council and to the public, this is a living, breathing document, so changes can and most likely will be made going forward, uh, as a reflection of the changing conditions, both internally and externally, and any additional information.
So just to be clear, we're going to pass a resolution to make this document the guidelines, but the document can, can, the doc, the contents of the document can fluctuate. That's, that's where I'm kind of trying to understand, whereas it's a ongoing direction versus something that we, like a resolution. Um, I just, only because I don't remember ever doing this before, that's why I'm questioning it.
I, I see it a little different. I mean, uh, I understand your point, I believe, uh, but I see it as, this is our target and something like, uh, a flood or COVID may happen, and our target may require a course correction, uh, but this is where we hope to go.
Right. So we don't, we won't need to like do ongoing resolutions each time changes are made, right? It's.
Nothing, uh, nothing outside of norms.
Right. I, I only bring the, and I don't have probably, I just, you know, I've been in office for five years. I don't ever remember the strategic plan and coming and be, and have to be, you know, made a resolution to make it like official. So I don't have a problem doing that because we obviously talked about it and it's a document we agreed on. I'm just saying it's a little abnormal.
Mr. Splendario, it's not required that it be made official, correct?
Um, it's going to be a strategic plan, whether we pass it by resolution or motion anyways, and it is always subject to change. I think this is just to have one clear document that is clearly the body's strategic plan. You could change it a month from now if you wanted to, but it's just so everyone's working from the same playbook. That's just the concept behind it. Um, so in that sense, it's still a living document, of course. It's just makes it clear there was official action of this body to approve this document, not any other draft or any other version, so everyone's on the same page. I think that's the only intent of it. Whether it's by reso or motion, it's really the council's pleasure. I don't think there's anything in the resolution that takes that document to a level that is not what I've already just described.
Right. I just want to be clear that the document can fluctuate, like its contents are, are ever, it's a lick, it's a living, breathing document like Mr. Hines stated.
And it's, it's the council's document, so anytime you can call it up. So yes.
Okay.
And it's, it's not, it's not anything we haven't stated in the past or discussed in public.
No, no, I know. I just, we've never done this before. I just thought it was break from normal. I was just to understand. So I, I have no problem with it. I, I would support a motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Uh, moved by Councilman Farmer, seconded by Councilman Lozano. Is there, I'm sorry, is there any other comment? Is there any public comment on this hour?
No public comment.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Uh, moving on to public works department, subject Walnut Avenue Interchange Project, uh, alternative presentation by Mr. Sellings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, for this item, city, uh, the city's, uh, planning document, the general plan, uh, has identified the potential need for a interchange at Walnut Avenue and State Route ninety-nine. Uh, and so to that end, the city, uh, hired consultant, GHD, uh, to perform the initial uh, analysis that's required in the, uh, project development process. So, um, and that is called the project initiation document. I'm going to pass this off to the things. Uh, so that initial step is called the project initiation document or PID. Uh, in the transportation sector particularly, there's a lot of acronyms, so, uh, if you hear something and aren't sure, feel free to ask. Uh, so here with us tonight, uh, is Ms. Heather Anderson of GHD. She is the project manager for the first phase of the Walnut Avenue Interchange, and I'm going to leave this for her. Uh, and she'll provide tonight's presentation. The purpose of tonight's presentation is basically an advanced viewing of what we, uh, will be presenting at the workshop on November second, uh, in a couple of weeks and, uh, for the public workshop. The goals of the workshop are to share, uh, the information with the community, answer any questions, and receive input on the remaining options. The project is in the very preliminary, uh, engineering phases. As I said, this PID or PID document is the first phase, really, um, and we are literally years away from selecting a final alternative, let alone doing any right-of-way acquisition and ultimately construction. So there's just no money for those, uh, forthcoming steps. We'll be seeking grant money, uh, as we go through the process. Uh, but again, it's, it's years away. Uh, so following the presentation, Ms. Anderson and city staff will be available to answer any questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Heather.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you, council, for having us today to talk about this and, uh, what I've been living and breathing anyway on my end for a little bit. Um, so today, I just want to give a little bit, again, that precursor of what we're going to discuss at the public workshop. It's planned for November second, so a couple of weeks away. Um, we want to kind of cover these key features, so just what our, uh, background and kind of the initiative of the project is, what the constraints are, the preliminary alternatives that we've come up with to date, um, and then what those next steps are. And again, as Mike, um, relayed, is that this is still very much in that first preliminary phase as Caltrans requires us to do for a project on system like this. Um, and so any input is greatly appreciated. So big picture, um, just from a general plan concept and kind of back to that strategic plan and, and looking ahead, uh, for the city, uh, there is a need to kind of complete that local circulation. You know, right now, we really only have the northern side and the southern side for good crossings of ninety-nine, and that's kind of how Walnut Avenue came to be, to start to look into what those alternatives could look like and what those could cost. Uh, we want to keep sustainability at the mindset because that does help with future funding, um, as well as, uh, what efficiencies we can make here and improve safety. So those are our kind of key goals as we're looking at these alternatives. The constraints, everything's pretty closely spaced through here. It's just kind of how it's historically grown, um, so we want to take those into consideration. You know, the, the spacing between Twin Cities to the north and Pringle's Aires to the south. Uh, we want to make sure we're looking at kind of regional connectivity, how we can limit impacts to right-of-way. We want to maintain that frontage road access because that's key, um, to how the city operates. And Caltrans, actually, at our kickoff meeting a couple of months ago, they also came to the table and made the same suggestion. So they see the value of the existing frontages that are there today because it is supporting ninety-nine. Uh, we want to maintain residential access and we want to, you know, break down those barriers as best we can for getting across ninety-nine. And to Mike's point, you know, this is a long-term plan, so as part of the recommendations that we're going to make, um, we're looking at, at best, opening around twenty-thirty if funding came to be. Um, and what Caltrans requires is looking at twenty years beyond that date. So we're actually looking at traffic projections all the way into twenty-fifty with the alternatives that we consider. So big picture, Caltrans kind of requires you to throw anything and everything that could stick at the wall. Uh, that included twenty alternatives, which is a lot, and nobody wants to look too far into any of those because they, a lot of them don't hold merit for different reasons, and that's what the table shown here is showing. Um, but through discussions with city staff, we agreed that six were worth further consideration. That doesn't quite require, mean that you loved one versus another, it just meant that there were six that had some value in moving forward through the process. Um, but ultimately, this will be documented in an alternatives analysis memo and provided to council as well as other members of the public, um, and attached to that PID document that Mike mentioned earlier. So these are the six alternatives. They vary, um, from more, I'll say, traditional, like the one that's shown on the screen here, which is what, uh, we creative engineers like to call a diamond interchange because it looks like a diamond. Um, and it could vary in intersection control, um, and trying to maintain those frontage roads. And I'll go fairly quickly through these, but happy to answer questions. Um, we want to look at innovative options, so one of which is looking at maybe the northbound side, holding the existing intersection as it is, um, but kind of bringing in, uh, the ramps kind of in a different configuration so that we can put a new bridge over ninety-nine. Uh, we're not loving, uh, just full, just, you know, uh, we're not loving how the southbound frontage road is looking in this. You know, we, we don't want to make major right-of-way impacts in the suggestions that we make for alternatives, um, but that's what it would take, um, some variation to get something like this in on the southbound side. Um, then we looked at something fairly similar to the concept that's at Twin Cities to the north, um, so kind of a multiple roundabout in, um, sequence. And that, again, is more just trying to look at limiting those impacts for the new frontage road location so that the ramps can still go in. Um, then this is a variation on that previous one, again, trying to limit those impacts to frontage roads and adjacent residences and businesses the best that we can. And you're seeing two dots on each side. Those may actually come to fruition as being a single intersection that just looks like a big barbell. Um, we, again, haven't gotten into that level of detail yet because we want to detail things that the public, um, can get behind. Um, so I like to call these stick figure drawings, and next round you see these, they'll actually have lanes and we can see how big this, you know, these alternatives we think hold merit actually get. This one is a, a wowzer from a cost perspective, but it's innovative from a federal highways side of the house, which is called a single point interchange. Literally, everything comes to a big single point in the square in the middle. Um, it's a very large structure. It's very costly, um, and we're probably not going to move this one forward, but it's worth showing just what that could look like because that would be a question Caltrans would have coming to the table. And then lastly, something I would say way on the end of innovative, um, but this would be a reversing roundabout diverging diamond interchange. Um, and there aren't very many diverging diamond interchanges. I have not seen one with roundabouts in it in the state, and so we're kind of already on the city and, uh, consulting side thinking this one's probably going to go away. But the value it holds is it's much less impactful from a right-of-way perspective, um, and the cost could be a little less than some of the other alternatives because the structures are smaller. Um, but other than that, um, when we get into the metrics, it's probably not going to move forward. So our next steps and what we plan on doing is having that public workshop to gain feedback from the public on the six that I showed. Uh, we're going to do a presentation, just again, what I've provided to you, um, as a preamble, and then we'll have boards of each of these alternatives around the room, um, at the PD community room, so that we can get input kind of on a one-on-one style, too, and little post-its and, you know, any suggestions that the public may have. Uh, we're going to then schedule a focus meeting with Caltrans to walk through the same alternatives, provide them the input that we've heard from you folks tonight, if we get any, as well as the public, and ultimately, uh, rate these so that we get down to at most four, that again, we'll take from the stick figure cartoon level to actual lanes and we can start to see what those look like. And then we'll do a traffic analysis, again, with that idea of looking way in the future, um, to that twenty-fifty year mark. Um, and all of those pieces are required by Caltrans in order to get that project initiation document completed, which right now we are trying to shoot for fall of next year. So again, very early on in the process, we have a year ahead of us, um, and just want to make sure that we detail the right alternatives moving forward and set the city up for funding if they so choose to move this forward in the future. And that's all I've got on this one. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, maybe just for the public, you could, uh, review the colors that we'll be looking at or have been looking at.
Yeah.
If they haven't already seen the, the report.
Yeah, of course. So, yeah, we, we tried to make it, uh, color-coded stick figure a little bit, so the, the teal blue color is intended to represent the frontage road, um, and how it would need to get pushed out from the more standardized interchange configuration. Um, the red color is representing the more Caltrans facility, the on and off ramps, and the orange is the, the structure, so the new bridge that would go over the top.
And that's the general theme through all the slides, correct?
Same theme all through, yep.
Does the council have any questions or input they would like to add?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. Um, uh, Councilman Lozano asked me a question, which kind of made me think of something. Um, and Mike, maybe help me out with this, but the upper right property, uh, which would be, um, the, so the upper right-hand teal line, is that the pallet yard that we own right now that we lease out?
Correct.
So then the opposite one that's in green, that would be the Kessler property and all that?
On the southwest, correct, yes.
So in these scenarios, one would assume that the city would have to gain ownership of all that property in order to put the frontage road through there?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so that property is currently for sale as industrial land, which has been looked at, not purchased, but it has been combed over, I guess you should call it, by some people. So depending on the future of said property, should it be bought and developed into industrial? Then obviously these, what if we were to adopt a certain, and then would we have to then modify the plans, beans, on who owns the property at that time, or?
I'm not sure, um, can you repeat the question? I'm not sure.
So the Kessler property is currently for sale?
Okay.
And I believe it's zoned industrial, if I'm not mistaken?
Okay.
Because there was somebody that was looking at buying it, but it needed too much, like, um, uh, envi, like mitigation for floodplain or something like that, if I recall?
Yeah.
So if that were to sell and then somebody developed that property, that would obviously change what these, right?
Potentially, yeah. It would depend on where we're at in the process. Uh, you know, it's essentially if we did not have what's called a preferred alternative, which would be at the end of the next step, uh, in the project development process, if we did not have a preferred alternative, uh, you know, basically, this is what we plan to build, you know, where we'd be at that stage?
Yeah.
Um, then we, uh, we could make an offer to purchase, but, um, you know, and, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, we would not have grounds to acquire it, you know, through an eminent domain potentially.
Yeah, so I feel like, I'm almost like looking at this as like a cart before the horse. So if we have community forum and get input and then we decide on a design, and then we take that design and go after grants, and then those grants come in, and then between that time, some of this property be available or not available, don't we have to kind of start that process over and make changes? I mean, it just seems like we're, it's almost like we need to approve the plan and then try to access, buy the property like we did with the pallet yard in anticipation that we're going to build and then wait for funding to come in for the overpass.
Yeah. Well, okay, so a couple of things there, I guess, uh, I'll try to make sure I cover it. Um, like the pallet yard, if the property is for sale like it is now, we wanted to buy it for, you know, whatever we might build out there someday, we can, you know, we can buy it at fair market value or whatever we agree to negotiate with the property owner. Um, you would not have grounds, you know, to acquire through an eminent domain process, basically. Until you have something, you know, that you've said, this is what we're going to build, this is what we agree, that the council takes action, that this is the alternative we're going to build, you would not have that level of potential, um, acquisition authority, if you will.
Right. So that's, and, and maybe I'm just, maybe I'm just confused and I don't make any.
But it does depend on timing.
Yeah.
It's very much dependent on timing.
I just feel like we're talking about proving a, a plan that entails using property that we don't own, and not just that, but I'm sure there's maybe some, that's, that's what's confusing to me.
Yeah, so it, maybe in a hypothetical, may, hopefully this will help you. If somebody else were to purchase that property and build something there, in the meantime, we haven't defined what we're going to build. And so they build something, you know, whatever it is, a structure, I don't know. Um, and then we define what we're going to build, and that structure is in the way, then we would, you know, basically have to go compensate them for whatever loss they may have, kind of thing, even through potentially an eminent domain, uh, action. Or we would look at, you know, is it more cost-effective to not, you know, take that and rev, refine the alternative to work around it, so to speak? and refine the alternative to work around it, so to speak, so?
So, I, yeah, some makes sense. So, I'm just wondering, so two, so two questions, and one is, if we come up with a design through your firm, right, we're paying your firm to do this, right? So, if we come up with that, we pay to come up with a design, and then that design has to change because that's, that property sells, what's the cost of that going to be to go back to the drawing table, right? Secondly, I kind of have, it sits kind of uneasy with me, the fact that we're even looking at building something and coming up with design plans for property that, I mean, if that was my property right there, and I was the Kessler family, I'd be like, wait a second, you're going to go through a process and spend taxpayer dollars to come up with a plan to design a road that's going to be through my property? You don't own that property, and you're sitting here, we're throwing around words like eminent domain, it's a little bit scary. I feel like we should maybe either be looking to negotiate to buy that property if it's for sale, because that's an opportunity, or we should be talking about doing something that doesn't involve that property. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah. Again, it really is a timing matter. I mean, essentially, you know, Mr. Kessler, in this example, you know, regardless of our line, pretty picture drawings, as Heather said, you know, he has full latitude to do whatever he wants with the property, if he sells this to someone or whatever. Just because we put a line on a paper through, you know, his property currently, doesn't mean anything for, you know, him.
Do you believe Mr. Kessler's aware that we're looking at a project that would entail his property?
Well, knowing that there's an interchange out there, I don't know that he's aware, but he will definitely, you know, be notified, you know, at such time as, you know, this thing starts to, this is, like I said, very preliminary.
No, I know, I know.
This is simply to say like, hey, it could look like this, possibly.
I'm more concerned with just the spending of the taxpayer dollars with her, with Heather's firm to do the whatever, knowing that there's a great chance that we might have to modify the plan. So, I'd like to know what that cost would be, what, if we came up with all plan and all, all we're doing is tweaking that one road, is that considerable legwork to redo that, Heather?
Where we're at in the process, no, because right now, to Mike's point, it's very high-level planning. And so, what, for instance, I'm drawing these lines off of a Google picture. That's what we're scoped to do. I, we're not going in and actually measuring streets and having a survey, or that's all at that next phase. And so, and, and truthfully, when we're laying out these cartoon lines, as I lovingly call them, at this stage, and even when we go to start to draw lanes to them, it's still that more, I'll even call pie in the sky moment, because it is the, the very perfect-picture ideal situation from a Caltrans perspective, right? And so, that refinement, and when we really detail those line work, which is in that next phase, that's when we would get into all of those nuts and bolts to prove that it's the correct build alternative.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and this one, the intent, just so that I'm clear, is that this initiation document will not have a single build. It will have multiple options still, because they need to be further refined and environmentally.
So, you could pick, we were to acquire grant money, say, in three years from now or something, right? Then we can say, okay, here's A, B, C, D that your firm came up with. We could say, well, now that property's gone, and that's not available, these are the two choices we have to pick from, because A and B are not on the table anymore. And then we could proceed without, go out to bid or whatever with one of those designs or something, right?
Correct.
Okay, that makes lots, okay, that makes more sense to me. So, my last question is, just for public knowledge, what is, I know originally it was a high number, what is the dollar value that we thinking that we needed to proceed with this project?
I mean, Heather could probably give you a better sense, but I mean, this is a huge range from what she's shown here. I, I would, you know, I would say probably the low end, you're probably looking in the $30 million range, and the high end, you could be 100-plus, so.
Okay.
The last thing that I would just make for clarification, that next phase, it involves an environmental document, too. So, there would be full-on contact with all affected, potentially affected property owners. They would have, you know, full opportunity to comment on the document, and, and obviously, we want to design something that, that, you know, ideally works for everybody, so.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Heather.
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of questions. The, so the Caltrans alternatives, I think you've already answered it, but I just want to make sure. What we're seeing tonight, doesn't have to be one over the other, it can be a tweak of, or a mixture of, of alternatives.
Exactly.
Okay. And then to Councilmember Farmer's point about, you know, designing something that, on property that we may not, may or may not own, I, I agree, and, and the best we can do to keep out of folks' property, you know, the better, I think, and I think that's everybody's thought. However, I will say this, you know, we have a lot of area up in that industrial area that can be accessed through that. And I would make the suggestion that we do public outreach, which we've done very well the last several years, and maybe we include some of those property owners that haven't sold their properties or, that own properties in that area, where maybe their, the sale of their property has been a stumbling block because of access. And maybe we can partner with them to develop something that will assist them in selling their property to a level that they think is appropriate. So, in that example, Kessler property, maybe we meet with them and say, hey, who, who's been interested, what types of uses, and maybe we design that piece of it to feed into that property so that it would be, you know, an economic driver for them. Again, just my thoughts. I appreciate the presentation and the work that's been done on it. I know there is sentiment in the community. There was a, a post online where there was a black line that included many properties around that intersection. I didn't see it myself, but the question came up of whether or not those property owners would be affected. So, just knowing, know going forward that that's going to be a sticking point, as in most probably projects that you deal with.
And, and I, to that end, I think that's why, you know, we're, we're trying to also discuss the fact that these are the six of the 20 that were worthwhile to further look at, but that doesn't mean that they're all going to move forward, right? And that is something that we are heavily taking into consideration, is the right-of-way impacts that could be associated with any of these.
Councilman Papinow, Councilman Sandu, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Heather gave us the presentation. Just for a clarification, you know, that's Walnut Overpass, I don't see the full overpass in the picture, because there is a reason we cannot make a full overpass instead of a different alternative, because due to the east side, there is other owner of the property. And the second thing is, what's the Caltrans requirement to one overpass to the other pa, the other overpass? But we already have the overpass on Twin City, I just want to make sure you clear, take it clear from the Caltrans in order to spend some money.
I guess a clarification on my part for question one is, so they all include a bridge at Walnut, the, the orange coloration, so was there another?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm just talking about, you know, there is, you might be on El Gro, Laguna, they have a full overpass, right? Same thing on, so I'm talking with, I don't see that full overpass in this, any alternatives, but what, there is a reason, because we don't have enough space to make a full alternative, or?
I'm going to take a stab at what I think you might be asking, maybe I've got it wrong, but I think if you're just asking, why can't we just, just put an overpass and leave the existing ramps like they are? Is that what you're asking, to try to minimize impacts? And the, the answer is, and Heather will elaborate probably, but Caltrans has certain standards, those ramps do not meet current standards, and so essentially, you break it, you bought it, so you've got to come up with a design that meets all the standards, so.
The other thing is from Twin City Road to Walnut is less than a mile, so Caltrans say, okay, you can make another overpass less than a mile?
So, one of the mitigations that's already been discussed, and this is part of that evolving funding discussion and partnership that will need to continue as part of this project, but they would like to install what they call auxiliary lanes to help mitigate that. So, it puts an extra lane that's basically solely used for getting on and off the freeway within those two interchanges.
Kind of like between Central Galt and Simmerhorn, like we have now, right?
Exactly, exactly, yep. And they would want that on all four sides, so between Pringle Ayers and Twin Cities as part of this project. So, again, back to, you know, what Mike's alluding to, is there's a lot of partnership pieces that need to be done as this project progresses, because that's mainline work. And to further that discussion is technically, it's not just the bridge-to-bridge that's the mile, it's, it's what they consider interchange, which is already there today. So, it's already there as a non-standard feature. Us adding a bridge doesn't necessarily change the distance between the two, because the, the standard is based on, again, that safety component for being able to merge on and off the freeway within a reasonable distance, and, and that's just not there today, right? So, if it's a current issue that Caltrans has, then, then maybe they can partner and come to the table to help with those auxiliary lanes on mainline. So, that's part of this discussion, is part of the project. But Mike's 100% right. The second we start creating alternatives, we break it, we buy it, that's why we have to show the, the bigger improvements, like the frontage roads getting pushed out, because those are also a standard that Caltrans has for distances between intersections, too, on the overpass.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Papinow.
No questions, just thank you for the clear explanation. It kind of made my head hurt reading it. So, I'm trying to figure out the lines, but no, it's, it's obviously very, very preliminary, and I appreciate you, both of you, getting it out here ahead so we can kind of start understanding it early.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. You know, on the, I guess it's this, I don't know what page it is, but it's, the page before the first diagram, there's a lo, a large gray block, and I actually could not read that. I went online, and I could not read it as well, but it would have been nice to read through that, just for, you know, other ideas and spitballing, so to speak.
Okay.
So, I have, I have a couple of questions, just for clarification on slide, well, the alternative page three. On the west side, it shows a roundabout, and the blue is depicting the frontage road, correct?
Correct.
And is, am I seeing that, is it just too small for my old eyes? Is that, without intruding into private properties?
That would probably require some level of right-of-way impact.
I'm curious why we didn't do that on both sides, similar to Twin Cities? It seems like, if you look at Twin Cities, you know, they, they lowered the, or the, that's the way the highway was, that's a very old bridge, actually, but those two roundabouts, as much as people struggle with them, they are pretty compact and, and fit snugly into the area there, and they solved a bad problem the city had at the time. So, that physically doesn't fit, because you mentioned the Caltens, Caltrans has certain requirements that the city must meet when presenting items, and that just won't work out?
No, we could, we could also add that as an alternative to further look into, to show, basically mirroring the, I'll call it the, the six-leg spider, I guess, in a way, that's on the west side, or on the east side, onto the west. We could look at that, too.
Okay. And then, alternative five, and you have the square, which is the universal, you like that one?
No. It's just, it's called single-point, a single-point diamond interchange. It's just, they're very big, so they're, they're kind of.
Is that, is it, is it an all-encompassing term, whatever may show up?
Yes, everything comes into one single point in the middle. There's actually one up in Medford that's operating very well, and there's one down in Anaheim that I can think of off the top of my head. And it helps when you have a lot of things coming all at once, and you're trying to, I would say, reduce the impacts more in an area where you have available right-of-way, which is mainline, right? So, that's the positive to this. The negative to this is it's very expensive from a structure standpoint, because that's a really big bridge that's now over 99 for all these different points to come into at different angles. And it becomes kind of a visual aesthetic issue from just, the, the city doesn't have that style of things here, right? We're, we're not a hugely urban area like Anaheim, right, where this would stand out. So, that, for those reasons and, and cost, Mike and I have already been thinking this one's probably going to get taken out from a metric perspective, but again, from that right-of-way impact side, that was why we made it one of the six.
Okay. And then, alternative six, it shows a dual bridge and, and again, some expansion of properties, et cetera, et cetera, but it made me think, has anyone proposed the idea of a large, single roundabout that would cover both sides?
Uh, like in the cen, like in the center?
In the orange, you know, instead of making that bridges and having two roundabouts on each side, making the orange part one large roundabout?
Yes, that, that is essentially what this one would do, that we could refine the, the lines a little bit more to, to show it.
That's why I was kind of asking about the square, because that's an all-encompassing whatever.
Could be either, exactly. Could either be.
It's like an overpass with a roundabout?
Yeah, but I'm saying, so like on alternative, alternative five shows a lot of expansion of, of, well, it's a lot of tricky i-interchanges there. I would say eliminate all of that and can just make one roundabout that has enough exits to accommodate.
All of the things.
Frontage and on-ramp.
We could look at it, yeah.
How about a tunnel option? I'm joking. I mean, we're just talking about roundabouts on overpasses, that's pretty crazy. Um, Mike, I, I'm sorry, I made.
No, that's, that's fine.
Mike, I have a question again. So, if I remember, I mean, obviously, this was, this whole project was to envisioning easy access, because we were anticipating the development of all that industrial area. We currently already have a ton of, obviously, residential area on the other side, which would benefit tremendously from it right now. So, I'm assuming, I'm assuming most people, I don't live over there, but me, Becken, Ask Ridge, when you come from Sacramento, do you exit Twin Cities, go through that roundabout, and go over the Twin Cities overpass, and then go through that roundabout, and then down the front? Is that what you do?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it's kind of half and half. I think there are a group of people, and I used to do this, go down to Simmerhorn and go around to my neighborhood there, or I, I use Twin Cities. It is frustrating, there's no access on Walnut. And I will say this, you know, I, I know there are a lot of people that are pretty happy about the idea of improving that, that area and that interchange. Those hook ramps are just absolutely dangerous, and I know Caltrans has a, a plan to address hook ramps from Bakersfield all the way to the, to the, the border, up in the northern border of Oregon. And so, yeah, no, I think it's a great idea, at least get some public feedback on what, what would be good, but I just, I, it doesn't matter what time of day either you're getting on to Walnut to go northbound 99, it's, I was do, driving that way at 6:30 this morning and, you know, had to wait for a, a big rig. And so, on-ramps and off-ramps are supposed to be, are accelerating and decelerating, and it's tough to do, so.
Yeah, it is concerning, thinking of like east view going to come online possibly in the next year, you know, at least start of it, and then we have other, you know, subdivisions or projects that are in that, in that vicinity, you know, east of the, of Walnut, thinking about how much more congested that Twin Cities bridge is going to start becoming more and more. It's already pretty crazy over there right now. I don't go through that roundabout often, but when I do, it's, yeah. So, anyways, I'm afraid we're going to really be needing this thing badly when it comes time to get the money. So, thank you. I don't have any other comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on to establishment of the geographical information system and related actions. Also, Mr. Sellings.
So, this presentation is for the council's consideration to establish a geographic information system. Another acronym for you tonight, sorry, GIS, so along with some related actions that tie in with that. So, first of all, let's define what is a GIS. It's essentially a system for storing, integrating, displaying, and analyzing spatial data, and spatial is kind of the key here. The information is stored on different layers, and you can hopefully see from the graphic that there's these different layers that have different types of information on them. And then those layers are used to essentially, you can manipulate those layers however you want, to, to look at different types of data spatially as, as how they relate to each other. Great for creating all different types of maps and exhibits, which is something that we do very frequently. And it just, you know, obviously, the ability to visualize data is, is a, is a key thing when you're trying to analyze it and determine what you're trying to do from that data. And as I touched on at the bottom there already, you know, you can output new maps once you have that data in the system, so. The thing that I'll, I'll, you know, expound on a little bit here, you know, with those different. layers and cross-referencing them, at least spatially, it really is a huge advantage. You can see how things relate to each other, which particularly in the public works sector, and I should probably disclaim right now, while this is a citywide system that we're looking to establish here, at least initially, this first phase will be, you know, heavily public works focused, so. And so what's our current state? So right now, we're utilizing our staff to add information to existing map files as graphical information only. If you were to come to my office, I'd show you the big maps that we have. There's a different one for sewer systems, a different one for storm drain systems, a different one for water systems. And that's all essentially, it's drawn electronically in like a CAD program, but the difference between a GIS system and essentially a CAD drawing is the GIS has intelligent data behind it. It is a database. So, and I guess one of the best examples I can give you for that is, you could look on our maps right now, and you'll see, oh, there's a manhole, and maybe there's a 12-inch or whatever-sized pipe going, you know, in this direction, but that's it. There's nothing more. There's nothing that tells you when that was constructed, what maintenance has been done on it in the past, what the invert depth elevations are, what the slopes on the pipes are, all those types of information and more. That's the difference between a GIS and just a CAD drawing like what we currently have. So, so again, we're putting that information, you know, in these CAD drawings. It's graphical only, we can't query it. That's the other benefit, obviously, of a database, is you can query it, and I'll get into that a bit later. So you have the minimal details. And then, you know, when issues come up, staff have to go look in the files, you know, ASBIL plans and whatnot, for information, to try to piece together the information, what's needed for, say, one of our field crews, or, you know, if there's a new development coming in, what are they going to tie into, that kind of thing. So it's a time-consuming process, which time is money. And it's got to be done in the office, too. And one of the benefits I'll talk about later, as far as GIS, is it's available, you know, out in the field, too, so. And so right now, our maps, as I've touched on, only have utility information on them. They don't have that additional types of data that I mentioned briefly there. And so, you know, basically, we'll get a request, say, from, it might be from parks, it might be from economic development, or community development, for our CAD technician to create a map. And so he's kind of juggling limited information that he has geographically to kind of create these maps. Once it's in GIS, that information is there as, you know, as a layer that gets updated as needed, but it can always be brought in to create another exhibit as demands come along. So kind of turning to the benefits, the information, I've already touched on this a bit already, you know, can be used to create various different types of maps, and, you know, and laying on whatever information you want or not, and allowing that cross-reference that I touched on as well, you know, geographically or graphically, spatially. Less time-consuming, staff isn't having to go draw and add things, so to speak, or research information to add it onto a new map, depending on what's being asked. So obviously, less time-consuming. And then, again, it's a database in graphic form, that's probably, you know, the best way to describe it. So the information can be queried, and maybe to give you an example of querying, we could say, you know, we're looking to replace all valves that are, water valves, say, that are over 20 years old. Show me all the water valves that are over 20 years old. Bam, we can see where they are, we can schedule our crews accordingly, so they're not just bouncing back from one to the next while staff researches and tries to find them all. So once you've got that information in the database, you can query it, so. You know, I already talked about some of the details, as far as, you know, elevations, types of pipe, and all that kind of thing. One of the key things that'll be really nice going forward is, as maintenance does work, replaces a section of pipe, rebuilds a manhole, whatever it is, that information is then entered into the GIS database, and so future maintenance comes up, they query it, oh, we see that this thing was rebuilt, you know, in year X, kind of thing. So we know that it's, you know, it's at the point where it needs to be replaced again, or maybe, no, it's only so old, so we need to look to, you know, repair it in a different way. And then, talking about the real-time availability of it, so I can tell you, my former agency, you know, our field crews, from utilities to roads and bridges and those folks, they had tablets in their trucks. And so they're out either, you know, working on something, they can pull up the plans and everything right there, they don't have to either take their own time driving back into the office, or, you know, having office engineering staff look information up, kind of thing. It's all right there on the tablet, easily available. Saves a lot of time that way, too. So, and again, time is money, right? So just a much more efficient way of working, so. So as far as the proposed action tonight, staff is proposing this initial phase to fund it, and I'll touch on that in a minute as to what that looks like, but to contract with a consultant. We're familiar with a consultant who has done this for other cities, and the county done work for others, who's kind of a specialist in this type of work, to go through our information that we have and put it into the system to establish the system. And then we did, the council approved an engineering technician position that was primarily for managing this and updating it, and so we would utilize our new position for that going forward in public works. And then, future phases, as I mentioned, this is a citywide, you know, system. I know PD already has their own information, you know, where they have their accident data entered in there, and maybe there are citations, whether it's for speeding or whatnot, I'm not sure, but having that kind of information and being able to cross-reference it, you know, would help us in terms of identifying potential safety projects, things like that on the roadways, parks, you know, for all their facilities, from irrigation systems to various features. You know, the other piece of public works would be the facilities. We would be able to put, you know, building-related information in. When's the last time that building got a new roof, or when was the last time that HVAC unit, you know, was maintained or replaced, those kinds of things. So, you know, you can see others up there, streetlights, the CFDs, there's just a host of information that comprises one of these systems, so it really is citywide. So again, to authorize the establishment of this is staff's recommendation, and then authorizing an initial budget of $120,000 for this current fiscal year, and with respective $30,000 contributions from Funds 1, 2, 5, and 7. And again, those are 2, 5, and 7 specifically are public works. And as far as Fund 1, that there is, well, I was going to say storm drain, but there are some other portions of information that tie into Fund 1 for us as well. But there's a little bit of work, too, I'd say, for particularly probably community development, so that's a Fund 1 piece. And then authorizing the city manager to enter a professional services contract with a consultant within the total budget amount. So with that, I will stop talking and take any questions.
Any questions from city council?
My con first, there we go. A couple of questions. So the $120,000, it says, initial budget of $120,000, so $30,000 of it's going to come from the funds you mentioned, 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 5, whatever. $30,000 comes from that, where does the other 90 come from?
So it'd be $30,000 from Fund 1, $30,000 from Fund 2, $30,000 from 5, and $30,000 from 7, yeah.
Okay, and then, so then, my next question would be, the $120,000 is for the consultants, actually, the consultants, actually for them to build, to take our maps and put them into the, build the system for us, right?
Essentially, yes.
So what is the ongoing cost? Is there a reoccurring cost, or is it just like a, like a, what's the word for it? Like an ASBIL, like, let's say, I don't know, another, a new housing development comes online and they build some new streets, so now the map needs to be updated. Do we just have them come in and just add that additional information each time it's needed? Is that how it would work?
I can envision, depending on the type of data, it would be either our GIS tech updating it and inputting that information, or in the case of a new development, we would condition them to provide us the information in GIS, so that that way it could essentially be folded into our system.
Okay, so what I'm looking for is just to figure out what the reoccurring cost could be after the initial system is built?
Sure, yeah, with any database, great point, council member, that there is an ongoing cost, because a database is only as good as it's, you know, being kept up. Once it starts falling out of date, kind of thing, then you start to question, you know, the validity of the information. So it does require an ongoing maintenance. I would largely expect that that's going to be, you know, the task, initially at least, of our GIS engineering technician, and who actually just started with us last week, so.
So, and is this system, I know it's called GIS, which refers to what it is, but is this based on a certain software program? And if so, is that, is our licensing required, and that would probably be one of those reoccurring things?
Yes, there's a company called ESRI, E-S-R-I, and they're essentially what Auto, I don't know, this probably doesn't make much sense to you guys, but what AutoCAD is to CAD, meaning it's the benchmark program that everybody uses. ESRI is to GIS. We already do have an ESRI license in public works that we're utilizing, so there may be some additional licensing needed for that, depending. But for now, we see the consultant basically putting the information in. Sorry, I'm city managers.
No, he was referring to someone speaking. So, so with that, I'm assuming, like most stuff now, it's probably cloud-based, so you're not pulling it off of an internal server? So, and this might be like an IT question that can't be answered tonight, I'm just intrigued by how this would work. I would assume if it's cloud-based, then the city itself could be licensed as a whole, so if Craig needed to access those maps, he would have access to them, too. Is that correct?
Yes, there's essentially two types of licenses. There's a, and I'm forgetting the terms, but there's the license type where you can actually go in and edit data, and then there's a license type for like a user license, where they can only query the data, they can build maps and whatnot, but they can't change any data, so.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the usefulness across this.
Yeah, so like Craig wanting to do a map, they would have a user license that he or one of his staff could use to get into the system and essentially create the map that they want, you know, probably with some training on the software, but the user license would allow for that, yes.
And this software is going to go across many different departments, like for building, we use a software, and we're going to lose the ability to use the current shape files. Everything's going to GIS. We use a shape file from the county, so we're not going to be able to use that in the next couple years, so we're going to have to see this shift. But it's going to impact a lot of different departments, whether it's Parks and Rec being able to track all their parks and different facilities, for us in the building department and planning, even being able to put like code enforcement cases and track where we're seeing the...
So if I may, council member, this effort is the beginning of the city's implementation of GIS, period. The city is sort of behind in this area. There are many cities around us that have much more sophisticated GIS functions, and we are just starting this process. We're going to start with wastewater, freshwater, because those departments have significant assets underground that are critical to the functioning of this city and this community. So we want to get all that mapped in, and as Director Selling said, the detail that we can apply is tremendous. If we have all of these, the infrastructure mapped out, and a water main goes, we will know immediately where that water main is, when was it last replaced, how long it is, what's it going to take to get there. They're going to know that immediately, without having to shovel through a bunch of maps. They're just going to go into the system and know. If this is a system, citywide system, as we envision it to be in the future, the PD and CSD will also be able to see where that main is as well. And they can dispatch whatever resources they need to control that area. So this is merely the start of the city being able to share this kind of information. And as Director Hoffman mentioned, there will also be a layer, and how we manage all this information is in layers. And so there'll be a layer for wastewater, there'll be a layer for freshwater, there'll be a layer for community development, where that'll probably be parcel-based and all the things that are related to the general plan. The PD will have a layer where they're able to track crime statistics and various other activities and within their beats and within the geographical areas of the city. So, and parks will also have a layer, or two, or three. I've seen some GIS applications where they have a layer just for trees, okay? They track every tree in the city. The tree goes down, the database is updated. But they know immediately if there's some issue with aphids or some sort of issue with the trees, they'll know immediately which trees are going to be affected, and they can take proper measures. So this is our, this is our stab toward moving to the future.
Okay, yeah, and I understand all that. I just, that's why, so I'm just trying to understand, this is, even though we're starting with public works, this is something that's going to be a broader thing for the city. So it's interesting you mentioned aphids, because, and I'm now putting my citizen hat on right now.
I'm sorry.
You know, one would say they see, you know, again, citizen would see us, you know, implementing a new fun tool that we have, it's going to be very useful, I don't disagree, and I think most people will see the, you know, the benefit to this. But we still do have, you know, there's some streets in town, like B Street, I drive every day, like the pavement is literally missing in spots now completely. People keep bugging me about B Street. Today I had business owners on a business walk, want to know how come the aphids on all the trees in front of Lincoln Way, and why come public work hasn't fixed the sidewalk that's messed up, and, which I'm going to be mainly aware of those, and you're probably just not aware, but I'll be sending you an email about that stuff. So I just want to say out loud that it's, I support systems that'll make your guys' job easier, but I also want to understand the public to say, well, we're going to get the shiny new things, but we can't take care of these little things over here, and that kind of stuff. And so I just want to make sure that I bring that out.
Council member, I can also assure you that there will be a layer for sidewalks, and there'll be a layer for streets, okay? And so we'll be able to tell you and pretty much anyone where those issues are, and we can track the age of the sidewalk, the age of the pavement, when it was laid, how long it cured, how long it cures. We can get very detailed, Mike, sorry, but I don't know, we want to track that level of detail.
We're not going to track curing.
But, but we can give, we have, it's just tremendous data. In the four cities that I've been in, or four or five cities that I've been in, this has been heavily implemented in three of them, and it's been a tremendous help.
Mr. Sellings.
I would just say, I very much, you know, point taken, and I would say, I would not characterize this, I mean, I can see how people could say maybe a shiny new tool, kind of thing, but what I would say is, this is essentially using technology to gain efficiency, so we can do more of those things. Yeah, instead of spending our time researching records and stuff and resources, kind of thing, it should give us additional efficiency gains to where we can essentially...
No, totally understood, yeah. I just, you brought the aphids, and it just like, it was like, I can already have a public person that's watching this is going to say, well, we don't need $120,000 system to tell me that the trees in front of my business have aphids and nobody solved it in the two years I've been complaining about it. I know that's not your thing, trees is part of the wreck, but I'm just saying, I can already hear that right now. But I understand efficiency, absolutely.
Concrete repairs and stuff, yeah, on sidewalks, trip hazards, those kinds of things, yeah, this is what is used to track those, and so help us keep on top of things better, so.
We have a public comment, so I'd like to address it before we move on.
Phyllis?
Yes, I'm going to treat this as an ex-programmer and an ex-person who sold programs and equipment for different agencies and stores. My first question is, would be, who owns the system, totally? That's number one. Also, in relation to that, who maintains it? And if it's down, who's going to supply the repairs for it? What is it going to cost? For instance, if you can, purchase a service and/or maintenance agreement for this particular system and get the cost upfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Mr. Selling, so if I'm understanding... Mr. Selling, so if I'm understanding from in between the lines a little bit, this is an AutoCAD-style information system?
Correct. It will, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so you'll get, you can get a 3D view, but it also can, as it, if you had a water main in a certain place of valve, it can tell you if you input the data, but it'll tell you like the flange size, flange rating, 150, 300 series, it'll tell you the type of studs you need for, the bolts, you know, it's just a different term, but anyway, you can put that type of detail in. So if someone says, hey, the isolation valve on A Street broke, you can look in the system, it'll tell you you need A, B, C, D parts to go, you do your job. No one's going to have to go look for some paper or go drive out there, find it, drive back to go get it, right?
Correct. It would, what I would say is, any GIS system, you know, will provide you the level of detail that you put into it. So, you know, in the example that you cite for an isolation valve, say, it will probably, for us, it'll probably be model number X by manufacturer Y, kind of thing, you know, and then you know what that is, essentially. I don't know that we would get down to, you know, bolt sizes and things like that, but, but yeah, for the valve, because bolts and, you know, is much more readily available, but the specific valve, you know, those aren't sitting on shelves, kind of thing, so, yeah.
Okay, great. And then, what kind of file transfer is possible? Is there any from what Mr. Hoffman mentioned?
File transfer? Did I?
You guys are using a present system, is it transferable in any way?
So, that's a good question. I don't know enough about what our CAD tech does. AutoCAD files will oftentimes, you know, you can import them into GIS, but they won't have all the intelligence attached to them, because there is no intelligence there, meaning, you know, those details like, what is the invert of that manhole, or what is that pipe type, kind of thing? What is even that size, you know, because you just drew a line and you said it's an eight-inch, you know, line. So that kind of information is not in the CAD files that currently, what our maps are composed of. So yes, the lines would show up, and they are geographically located, but the intelligence is not there, and that's really, you know, the crux of what I think the consultants' efforts are going to be, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I just appreciate the presentation. I just had one question, most of my questions were answered, but what is the timeline or expected timeline of entering contract to getting all the data entered?
Yeah, I would.
And would we do that in phases? Would we do all like, all water lines and then start doing for the city and then do sewer? And how would that work?
Right. And not having been involved deeply in my prior organization, I think we will look to the consultant to, you know, review what we have and give us, you know, their game plan for how they would attack it to be the most efficient and get as much information into the system as they could. Timeline, I would say quickly, probably a couple of months to get a contract in place. And so, you know, by, you know, the first of the year, we've got the consultant on board and they're entering data. And again, I would be, you know, just guessing to kind of give you a timeframe on how fast they could do that or not, so. Probably a year, I'm going to just.
Yeah, I would. It's a lot of data.
It is, yeah.
It's a lot of data, but it's just, it's just the fact that we're starting this process, that's exciting, so. But it's going to, it's going to take some time. But the beauty of it is, as they enter data, it now becomes usable for Mike and his team. So, you know, so it's, one could say it's a year, one could say it's as soon as they start entering.
Okay. And I guess a bigger question for me is more of when this goes out to bid for, you know, or whatever process we're going to use to obtain the contractor to do this, will that be part of, their game plan be part of our evaluation of their costs, I guess?
Yes, I very much expect that, yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I would like, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the establishment of geographical information system for the city of Galt. Two, authorizing initial budget of $120,000 for FYI '23, '24 with respective $30,000 appropriations from the general fund O1, the gas tax fund O2, water fund O5, and the wastewater fund O7. Three, authorizing the city manager to enter into professional services contract with the total budget amount. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Papinell. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinell?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, everybody. Next is communication.
None this evening.
City clerks report?
None.
Comments by staff?
Just one thing, I will be in front of the elementary school board tomorrow night presenting the cannabis presentation to the board. And then Director Selling has some comments for us.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First off, I don't know if any of you noticed, but our new ADA actuated doors are in place on the bathrooms, so we are up to speed on that. So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And then the Galt Vegetation Management Project that we've been working on for the past few weeks, we anticipate completing that effort probably by the end of next week. There were six locations that we identified in our permit with the state Fish and Wildlife, and we've got four of them completed as of now, and we expect to be able to get those last couple done by, before the end of next week. And then I'm just going to throw out my reminder about leaves and whatnot. I see that there's a little bit more rain forecast next week, so just wanted to remind folks they're falling, and if we can get them out of the gutters and stuff, that'll help us out when the real rains come. So, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to you.
Thank you. Comments by city council members and future agenda items. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the staff, for hardworking, giving us a clean report. Thank you for the public comment, and thank you for everybody coming to join this meeting. And that's all tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papinell.
Not that I had anything to do with it, but I want to apologize for the interruption we had earlier, and hopefully we can figure out if that was some kind of Zoom hack or what we had going on there exactly. And then I didn't have a question, so I didn't prolong the item, but when I looked at our agenda and saw that we didn't have GIS, I was amazed at how we're actually functioning. I was relying on it, you know, about 16, 17 years ago with another agency to be able to just call up and ring up that information. So, thank you for working this well without it and for bringing us into the century. And that's all I have.
Councilman Farmer.
Yeah, I too, although it wasn't our fault, apologize for that. It's sad that people abuse their constitutional rights to not really make a point, but just to be a nuisance, so. But thank you for the people who made genuine comments tonight, both in the room and online when, before that hall went awry. And I apologize to those that didn't get to make their comments because of what happened. Other than that, I don't think I, I think, just say thanks to Parks and Rec staff, I know they're not here tonight, for great Saturday market, the first of the month. It's a great turnout, had a great time, the weather was nice, and look forward to going to the next one, the last one of the year. And thank you to SMUD and the Chamber for doing, and the city for doing the business walk today. It was very, very good and very helpful and informational, and I think it's something that they want to continue to try to keep doing and expanding on. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
I won't belabor the comments about the interruptions, but I too agree with my colleagues on that, and I want to thank the public that did come and make public comment as well as online in a civil manner. I wanted to thank Public Works and Park and Recreation Department for the progress on the community park tennis court project. I know we said November 30th would be the opening or the final, but it looks like, at least to the naked eye and to some of my pickleball friends, that it's closer than that. So if we can get an update on that, Mike, at some point about where the construction is, and like I said, there's nets and everything, it looks done. So, so thank you for your work on that. Love the signs. If you haven't been out there, there are notification signs on the fencing that indicate that the tennis courts are closed, so. And then, again, thanks to Amy Mendez and the Chamber and SMUD for the business walk opportunity today. I think we've learned a lot from our business community and will continue, I'm sure, doing those on an intermittent basis to get that feedback. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody, for the hard work from staff. I appreciate it all. It was quite clear for them, it was quite clear and your answers are very direct, I appreciate it. Thank you for SMUD. I also did the walk-around with the different businesses, and I would like to say, not only was it important to touch bases with the businesses, I felt it was, afterwards we had lunch and everybody that walked to the businesses, you know, we talked about what we heard and it helped consolidate what we needed to know as a group, so I think that was quite important, and I hope it happens. It should happen a couple of times a year, honestly, on different topics. We tried to inform people a lot about CCC Street project, so that was good, and a few wanted more information, which was also very good considering the concerns. And I will, I guess I'll just close with, being in agreement with my fellow council members about public comment, and with that, we close the meeting at 7:49 PM. Thank you, everybody.